One another during the COVID-19 pandemic and allowing public bodies to convene virtually for the purpose of conducting essential business. In accordance with that order, the committee's meeting tonight is for the purpose of conducting essential business only, and for this reason, the meeting will not include a public comment, period. I would ask you to join me in a moment of silence, and tonight, let us recall Percy Standifer, a Windsocket student, a former Windsocket student who was shot to death off Logie Street last week. He leaves a family and children, and so let's keep him in mind as well as his family. I will recite the pledge, and you can follow along. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Dr. McGee, let's begin with recognitions and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to begin my recognitions by congratulating Beth Campenelli as the 2020 Speech Language Pathologist of the Year in Rhode Island. I'm going to read to you the letter that was sent to me from Patricia Iafredi-Berini, who is from the Rhode Island Speech Language Hearing Association. She's actually the president. It's dated August 24th, 2020. Dear Dr. McGee, each year, the Rhode Island Speech Language Hearing Association is tasked with nominating a school-based speech-language pathologist to be honored with other educators during the annual Rhode Island Department of Education recognition celebration. It is my pleasure to announce that Ms. Beth Campenelli of the Windsocket Education Department has been recognized as the 2020 Rhode Island Speech Language Pathologist of the Year. Beth was selected after a review of nominations based on her ongoing dedication to her students, their families, and her fellow speech-language pathologists. In the nomination we received from several of her colleagues, the Speech Language Pathologist of the Year Committee was able to see a leader and clinician who works tirelessly on behalf of her students and their families. They stated how Beth continually strives to make the speech and language program better for all students. They spoke of her ability to inspire others in her leadership role as Chair of the Speech Department. Our task was easy, as Beth exemplifies the best of our profession. Her achievement will be celebrated with other educators from around the state on September 28th, 2020 at a water-fire event in Providence. So again, I'd like to congratulate, we're very, very proud of Beth Campenelli as being named the 2020 Speech Language Pathologist of the Year in the state of Rhode Island. Great job, Beth.
Very good.
Congratulations, Beth.
Next, I would like to recognize another staff member who has recently retired. Ellen Schalvey was the General Manager of Sedexo Food Services. Ellen has worked with us for well over a decade. I've got to tell you that I personally have worked with Ellen for a long, long time, going back to my days as Principal of Windsocket Middle School and in my current position as Superintendent of Schools. Ellen is going to be missed very dearly. Her dedication to our students, to our community, to our families has really been second to none. She served on a variety of subcommittees, including the Health and Wellness Subcommittee here in Windsocket, and as I said, we're going to miss Ellen very, very dearly. Again, she was a great asset to our school department, and I wish Ellen health and happiness in her retirement. Ashley Plant is going to be taking her position. Ashley Plant is the new General Manager for Sedexo. We've already had some conversations with Ashley. She has some very, very large shoes to fill, but I'm sure Ashley will do a great job. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I am finished with my recognitions and announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the school committee would have any additional comments?
Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you. Six years ago, when I was originally appointed to the school committee, I was placed on the Health and Wellness Committee. I knew nothing about what I was going to do. Ellen reached out to me, and working with Ellen and Karen Witherall, we put together the Health and Wellness Committee that had sat dormant for a number of years. And again, it's because of Ellen Schalvey that we have a Health and Wellness Policy today. She was instrumental in all the work we did on the Health and Wellness Committee, and she will be surely missed. And what's great about Ellen, too, is that she was totally committed to the students of Windsocket. She was committed to their nutritional needs, obviously, and she did that daily in our kitchens. And she also did that by providing them meals and needed food on weekends, and obviously, she worked diligently throughout the summer to provide our students with necessary nutritional needs. She is going to be sorely missed. Congratulations to Ashley, and as Dr. McGee says, Ashley has big shoes to fill. But I just want to say thank you to Ellen. Over these last six years, working with her in the Health and Wellness Committee, she really made that committee what it was, and I hope I can carry on some of the great things that she did. Thank you very much, and good luck.
I agree with you, Vice Chair Burke. I've worked with Ellen, especially during those picnics we had at World War II, Park and Social. I mean, she always made sure that there was plenty of food, not only to feed the children of the neighborhood, but anybody who wandered into the park, even though they didn't belong to the school department, everyone was welcomed that day. She had a heart of gold, and I agree with you. She was totally committed to the welfare of our students and went out of her way to really make sure that all their needs were taken care of. So we are going to miss her, and I welcome and congratulate our new director, and looking forward to working with her. Anyone else? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to receive on place on file the recognition and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Capwell. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Next, we'll go to the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the August 26, 2020, open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Capwell. Any corrections, deletions, additions? Hearing none, Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Capwell, any committee member want to take any items out of the consent agenda or discuss anything within?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Perrier.
I'd like to pull a requisition, 210606, for Apple computers, for some iPads. We're still awaiting final authorization from RIDE for a grant, and I would just like to hold this off until the next school committee meeting, and when we have that grant funding finalized.
Very well. So you want to pull that out. So I'll make the motion to amend the consent agenda for removing this purchase. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Capwell. On the amendment, Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Thank you. And now for the amended consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the amended consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
And now what we've been waiting for, for a long time. Dr. McGee, your superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, do you want to take out of order, because it's actually under New Business? Do we want to move that to this part of the agenda?
We certainly can move that. We can move your report as well.
Yeah, because it's really the same thing, so I think there are a lot of people on who are anxiously awaiting, and I wouldn't want to wait until the very end, so I think it might be a good idea to move it.
So you'd like to move the item in New Business to as part of your superintendent's report? Is that what you want to do?
Yes.
Could you spell out that item? I don't have it in front of me. What is that item?
It's the discussion slash approval for the 2021 Windsocket Education School Reopening Plan.
Okay, all right, makes sense.
All right. I'll make a motion to move this item right after, as part of the superintendent's report, where we'll hear the report, and then we'll discuss and vote on the plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Dr. McGee, your report, and then after that, we'll discuss and vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Natariani was going to attach the link to the plan in the chat box so that everyone who's on can see the plan. And then, secondly, I just wanted to make sure that each school committee member has the link to the air testing that's been conducted over the last few days. I just want to make sure that everyone, that the school committee has that link, have access to that link.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Better.
Okay, so let me first start by thanking all of those who assisted in the planning process, which really started in the beginning of the summer. You know, once we had an indication that the fall was going to look very different than what it traditionally looks like, a group of educators and community members started working on the different components to the plan. I want to thank the members of the reopening task force, and I want to thank the members of all the work groups that were created to establish the different parts of the plan that were initially submitted to RIDE in July. I want to thank the directors for all of their work. I want to thank all the administrators. I want to thank all the staff, teachers and staff who were a part of the process. I want to thank the union for their collaboration with this process, and I also want to thank our maintenance department, facilities, and custodians who have really done an incredible job with our buildings this summer. The decision that was made with respect to what the plan that I'm going to present this evening, I just want everybody to know, and I've said this before, it's based on the health and the safety of our students and our staff. I wanted to make sure that the plan that was submitted this evening is a plan that is a safe phase-in. I realize that there are going to be some people out there that are not going to be happy with the plan, and there are going to be some people out there that are going to be happy with the plan. Unfortunately, you know, if I could create a plan that made everyone happy, I would have done that, but that's really impossible to do. But I just want everybody to know that the basis is for a safe and a phased-in reopening for our students and our staff. I also want to apologize for the lateness of this plan. It really wasn't what I wanted to have to do this late. And I want to explain sort of some of the reasons for the lateness of this plan being released to families, to parents, and to staff. So I'm going to go back in time a few weeks, just to sort of recap. So on August 24th, well, prior to August 24th, the middle of July, the Department of Education required all districts to submit reopening plans, which we did. Our plan was submitted, and there was no formal approval process. There was just feedback that was sent back to the district with respect to questions the Department of Health and the Department of Education had at that time with respect to our plans. So that was, again, the middle of July. We received our feedback by the end of July, and you know, we were prepared, we were waiting. We're not going to make a decision in the beginning of August because of a couple of things. Number one, we wanted to wait on Governor Raimondo, because she, of course, came out and made her announcement on the 31st of August, so we wanted to make sure that we received more guidance and more, you know, guidelines before we submitted our final plan. And the second piece to that is, on August 24th, the Department of Education released more guidance around, specific to facilities and physical plant guidance, and that was some really important information that came out. It was rather unexpected, and you know, it was a surprise, because all through the summer to that point, we were not aware of any modifications we would need to make in the district with respect to the airflow in our classrooms and in our buildings. So that came out, that was released on the 24th. Soon after that, the governor and the Department of Education established groups of walkthroughs. Folks from the Department of Health and the Rhode Island National Guard, they were sent out to districts last week. They came to Windsocket. It was a group of about six folks who were split up into two teams, and they went into each of our buildings, and the goal of these visits was to basically provide us with a checklist to see if we were meeting certain guidelines that had been established and have been established by the Department of Health and by the Department of Education. So that was based on, again, the facilities and physical plant guidance, which specifically looked at airflow in our buildings. So one of the things that we did, and I want to thank Mr. Natariani, our Chief Operating Officer, and his department, one of the things that we did, which not a lot of districts in the state did and have done, is we wanted to make sure that our airflow in all of our buildings, all of our classrooms, all of our offices, all of our common areas, were sufficient so that students and staff can come back to our buildings safely. We reached out to two companies. The first company we reached out to was Next Gen, and they came into our buildings, and they went through and they cleaned, and I believe they're still in the process, they're almost finished, but they cleaned out all of our HVAC ducts and vents across the district to make sure that there's no blockage, so that airflow could pass unobstructed. The second company that we reached out to was actually a company called AccuHealth, and it's the company that worked with us a couple of years ago when we went through the Career Center, when we had the instance of mold, and they went through that building with a fine-tooth comb and ensured that our airflow and air quality was where it should be before our students and our staff re-entered the school. So we reached out to AccuHealth, and actually, we have the owner of the company, Eric Anderson, who is here this evening with us, who can answer questions and can provide some more detailed information as I get into some of the results that we received from AccuHealth coming in and checking the airflow in all of our buildings. So I just want the committee, and I want, you know, everyone that's listening here this evening to know that we went above and beyond, because we felt as though it was important to our students, our families, and our staff. And again, there are not very many districts in the state that did this. So again, I want to thank Mr. Natariani, and I want to thank his department for doing a very thorough job in ensuring that our airflow is where it should be. So the AccuHealth folks have been through almost all of our buildings, they've been through all of our elementary schools, they've been through our high school, they're finishing up the middle schools, and they're finishing up the Career Center. And what they've done, and this is, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, this is one of the links that you have. This link is a link that shows each school, and it literally lists every single room in each school. There are many columns, and I'm not going to get into 99% of the columns, because they range from the, you know, the width and the length and the square footage of each room, but the one column, that's the most important column, is the column to the far left, second to the end, and it's the air changes per hour. The guidance that came from RIDE states that classrooms and rooms should have an air change of four to six per hour. That means that there's an air exchange in each room, or there should be an air exchange in each room every 15 minutes. And again, I'm not going to get into how they tested that, but I can tell you that each building, with the exception of the two middle schools, which are almost complete, and the Career Center, which is almost complete, they've gone through every single classroom, and we have a rating for every single classroom. At this point, I'm going to see if Mr. Natariani, if you'd like to add anything to what we've done thus far with respect to the air changes in our classrooms, and then if Mr. Anderson, you know, if the committee has any questions for Mr. Anderson, I thought maybe we could ask those now, and then I'll move along with my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I'm not sure if Mr. Anderson was able to get on the call tonight. He said he was going to attempt to. I'm not sure if he's out there. If he is, he can certainly speak up and unmute himself. He was having some issues earlier today with his technology. I think you pretty much encapsulated what we're doing here in the district, which is we've taken the guidelines that RIDE has issued in terms of air changes per hour, which they're requiring a four to six change per hour. And based on that measurement, we've then contracted with AccuHealth to go through to every classroom and make sure that they're meeting that minimum requirement, and if not, we're in the process, I believe it'll be tomorrow, we'll be sending a series of Windsocket Education, if I'm in trucks, to, I believe it's Westport, Mass. I could be wrong in the exact city, but they'll be acquiring filtering units for those classrooms that don't meet the minimum four to six changes per hour. The report that you have in front of you is an Excel spreadsheet. If you download it, you'll see there's a column that if you notice, it tells you how many air changes per hour are in the classroom. There's also a column that indicates how many additional units we would need in the room in order to get to the minimum four to six, and I'd be happy to work with anyone individually if they have any questions on how it would work. But we anticipate having enough units in place to have all of our classroom space available for educational purposes as the role of plan progresses.
I don't think Eric is on. If he is on, if he'd like to add anything to what Al just said, if not, I will continue with my presentation. Okay, sounds like he's not on, but I think we really sort of summarized really what the process entails and the necessity of doing this. Again, I want to stress that we're going above and beyond by doing this. I want to make sure that based on the guidance that was released by RIDE, specific to airflow in classrooms, that we're meeting that standard before students and staff return to our schools in whatever form that's going to look like, which I'll get into momentarily.
Dr. McGee, while you're speaking about airflow, are you going to cover what steps the district is doing and what units you're putting into the classrooms and the rooms that will get us up to the minimum airflow rate?
Yes, they're standalone HEPA units, and it's just a, it's a standalone unit that plugs in, and it provides, as Mr. Natariani said, it provides the bridge. So any classroom that's below four, it will provide enough recirculated air so that it gets to that four to six range that we're looking for in each of our classrooms. So that's what Mr. Natariani was referring to, that they're going to be picking up tomorrow, and those will be distributed across the district. I think there were 150 that we're purchasing, and that they have up to beyond 500 in stock, so we're going to pick up 150, and then we'll be purchasing more to make up the difference that we're going to need as we move forward.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up.
Vice Chair Burke.
My reading of the spreadsheet, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed to be we were in good shape, not great shape, but good shape, that many of the classrooms did meet the four to six airflow times an hour. Is that your assessment?
It is. It is. It depends where also, Mr. Burke. You know, there were some schools that only had a couple of rooms that meet that requirement, while there were other schools that had many more rooms.
May I just add, Dr. McGee, so just in conjunction with the assessment we're doing in each room, we also have our HVAC vendor and their subcontractors out fine-tuning all of the HVAC systems, so that, so prior to us even doing the fine-tuning, because it's a two-pronged approach to make sure we're ready for the start of school, we also have that going on in addition to the measurements and the additional HEPA units, so that we would like to ensure that we have all of these educational spaces available. So we're not really, we're more or less exploring all avenues to make sure that we're complying with the guidelines of four to six changes per hour.
So let me continue, and I'm going to get into the specifics of the phasing-in reopening plan for 2021. So the reopening plan consists of three phases. Phase one is going to begin on September 14th, Monday, and it will go through September 25th. And as part of phase one, all pre-kindergarten and kindergarten students will return in person full day, Monday through Friday. That includes any of our multilingual learners within our pre-K classrooms and our kindergarten classrooms. They will return, they will all return Monday through Friday, beginning Monday, in person. Kindergarten, on September 14th, Monday and Tuesday, they're going to have a staggered return, however. If you recall, each year, we do this for our kindergarten classes. We have half of our kindergarten students attend day one, and we break them up through their last name, beginning with the letters A through L. And then on Tuesday, September 15th, students whose last name begin with the letter M through Z will report in person. On September 16th, all kindergartners will report together. So let me go through that one more time. All pre-K and kindergarten students will be returning Monday through Friday in person. Monday, the 14th, we're only going to have kindergartners whose last name begins with the letters A through L. Tuesday, it's only kindergartners whose last name begins with the letters M through Z. And on the 16th, on Wednesday, all kindergartners. Pre-K will start on Monday. In the past, we've had pre-K start a week later. I don't see the need to do that. I think pre-K, we need to have our pre- I think pre-K, we need to have our pre-K students in on Monday. And again, this includes our multilingual learners in pre-K through K. In addition to those grades, all self-contained students who are in self-contained programs and self-contained classrooms in grades K through 12 will return Monday through Friday in person all day. Specific to One Socket High School, we have a TransPro program, which is a program for our students who are 18, from 18 to 22. That program is going to be hybrid to start in phase one. There are two groups. There there's a group, there are there are two teachers, I should say, in the program, Ms. Whitbeck and Ms. Beliveau. Ms. Whitbeck's students will be in three days in person and two days virtually. And Mrs. Beliveau's class will be two days in person, three days virtually. Our special education department will be reaching out and have, but they'll continue to reach out to our TransPro teachers and families to let them know the specifics of which days those two and three will be during the week. In addition to the TransPro program, there will be no in-person internships until further notice. And that's that's part of of that of the program is they have internships that they schedule with their students in the community. Also part of phase one, grades one through 12 will begin distance learning Monday through Friday. So again, phase one extends, begins on September 14th and extends to September 25th. Incidentally, I will be sending a letter out tomorrow to all in the community, families, parents and staff of this plan. So the next page you have is is the district weekly schedule. So it's what it looks like. It's what I basically just talked about, but it shows what it looks like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And again, we have pre-K, K, self-contained, K through 12, Monday through Friday, full day. Phase two will begin on September 29th and will tentatively run through October 9th. And I say tentatively because the progression from one phase to the next with this plan will be dependent on data and feedback we get from the previous phase. So phase two, after we've gotten feedback and data, and when I when I what I specifically mean by feedback and data is, what are what are the numbers looking like? You know, are we seeing an increased number in COVID cases in One Socket? In the in the district, in the state? We're going to look at all of that and that will be a a part of of what we're going to weigh as we move into phase two and then as you as you'll see phase three. So phase two, again, beginning on the the 29th of September and going through October 9th, will include grade one returning in person full Monday through Friday. So on September 29th, the plan is for all first graders to return Monday through Friday. In addition to grade one, the following grades will return in a hybrid schedule. Grades two, three, six and nine. Their hybrid schedule will look like, will look as at the following. Mondays will be a distance learning day. Students whose last name begins with the letters A through L will attend in person on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Students whose last name begins with the letters M through Z will attend in person on Wednesdays and Fridays. So the days that these students are not attending in person, they will be virtual with their teacher. So again, let me let me just recap phase two. Grade one returns in full Monday through Friday. Grades two, three, six and nine return in a hybrid schedule. Monday being the virtual day. Tuesdays and Thursdays, last name beginning with the letters A through L. Wednesday and Friday, the last names beginning with the letters M through Z. The next page shows that in a chart. Monday through Friday, it shows grade one attending each day. It shows grade two, three, six and nine attending in a hybrid plan with Monday being a virtual distance learning day. And Tuesdays and Thursdays, A through L. And Wednesdays and Fridays, M through Z. Phase three, the final phase, will begin on October 13th and that will go until further notice. Go on October 13th. And again, progression to phase three is based on data we get from phase two. So phase three will include grades four, five, seven, eight, 10, 11 and 12, returning in a hybrid manner. Mondays being a distance learning day, virtual day. A through L will attend in person on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And M, letters, last name with the letters M through Z will attend on Wednesdays and Fridays in person. The next page, again, is the weekly schedule showing grades four and five having distance learning on Mondays. Grade seven and eight and 10 through 12 having distance learning on Mondays. Tuesdays and Thursdays, A through L. Wednesdays and Fridays, M through Z. Over the last few days, I've I've asked my principals to send out emails and they've actually made phone calls to many, many, if if not all of their pre-K and kindergarten and self-contained students to to find out if their parents are opting for distance learning. A good number of them have opted for distance learning. So I want to let parents know that as we continue with these phases, I I've actually received quite a few emails over the last few months from parents who are requesting a a distance learning for their for their children. I know the principals have been receiving them. So parents will have that option for their child to just remain with virtual learning. If parents choose for virtual distance learning, they have to commit until the end of the fall. What I don't want to have are 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 students bouncing back and forth from in-person to virtual, back to back to in-person. So parents who opt for distance learning would be committing to December 23rd, which is which would be the the day before we leave for our 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 holiday break. And then we would then be resuming classes, whether it's virtually or in person, depending on where we are at that time on January, I believe it's the second. So I just wanted to to let parents know that they will have the option as we move along to phase, as we get close to phase two. There may be grade one parents. We actually did send out a emails to grade one parents who many of them have indicated that they would prefer virtual learning. But we will, we will do that over the next couple of weeks while we're in the midst of phase one. And we'll do that in each of the phases so that we have a a sense of of which students which which families would prefer their their students to stay home for for virtual distance learning. Teachers and staff, so all teachers and staff whose students are virtual. So teachers whose whose students are not coming in in person will report to their home school and will instruct virtually from their school. They they will not be teaching virtually from home. So their their day will begin as it normally would in the morning and it will conclude at the at the end of the day, their contractual day. So all teachers and staff and administrators, everyone will be in their buildings in either, whether they're instructing, obviously, in person, then they would have to be in their buildings. But if they're instructing virtually, they will be instructing from their buildings, from their classroom as well. We also, tomorrow, actually today, we had a professional development day for our teachers and staff. We have one scheduled tomorrow and Friday. Today was a was a virtual professional development day. Tomorrow and Friday will be open to all teachers and staff to enter their their classrooms or their teaching areas to prepare for the first day. So all teachers and staff can can come in, are welcome to come in to their classroom, their office, their building tomorrow and Friday. That's that's the, those are the three phases. And again, I I just, I I want to reiterate that there are going to be people who are going to be are disappointed because they want their children in school five days a week in person. And there there will be people who are disappointed because, you know, maybe less disappointed because they will have the the option of selecting virtual learning for their child, for their their child or their children. But again, I this decision was was not was not made. This was not an easy decision. I and and those of those of members of my team looked at a lot of different components. And I know that there are some districts, there are not many, but there are a few districts that are sending everyone back. And then there are some districts that are 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 starting with just virtual learning. And then there are some districts like like One Socket, where they're bringing back some grades and they're starting hybrid with with other grades and or they're starting virtually with other grades. Not an easy decision, but it's based on health and safety. And I've said this before and I'm going to say it again. I want to do this slowly and I want to do it right. I I want to bring back a small amount of students at a time. And again, we don't know what one phase to the next is going to look like. So with that, Mr. Chairman, if if you or the committee have have any questions, and I'm I'm sure you you will, I will be glad to answer your questions.
I've got comments and questions. And I'm sure the members of the committee will also have comments and questions.
Mr. Chairman, if I if I could, I I I I'm just finished with the plan part. Afterwards, I'm going to speak about sports.
Well, why don't you, you want to address that?
Do you want me to go into sports now or do you want to?
Yeah, do sports, let's do all. We'll scratch one item off my list.
Okay, very good. So I had a meeting today, Mr. Natariani and I had a meeting with Nancy Giordano, our athletic director. We talked about what the Rhode Island Interscholastic League is is planning as well as the Rhode Island Principals Committee on Athletics, which is middle school sports, what they have decided, what decisions they've made. And thus far, the Interscholastic League has given the okay for boys cross-country, girls cross-country, girls tennis, sideline cheer, boys and girls soccer and field hockey to begin in in the fall. I I do want to add a caveat and Ms. Giordano just sent me a text about, oh, 45 minutes ago, that the governor and the Interscholastic League and the Board of Health are going to be meeting on Friday. And they're hopeful to start soccer and field hockey for for sure. But they're still going to be discussing some of those those other sports. So right now, it appears as though soccer and field hockey will be a go. And the others, I guess, we're we'll we'll know more on Friday once the Interscholastic League and the Board of Health have a meeting to discuss where they're going to go with respect to that. I can tell you that on the 21st, in in speaking with with Ms. Giordano today, tryouts will begin. So it appears as though tryouts will at least begin for soccer and field hockey. And captain captains' practices can begin next week in in sports that, in in those sports, those fall sports that will be starting this fall. Football and boys volleyball have been moved to the spring, tentatively to the spring. And we'll get more information with respect to that as as we, you know, as as the school year progresses. But the determination was that football and volleyball, boys volleyball, would be moved to the spring. With respect to the middle school, again, the Rhode Island Principals Committee on Athletics, they're postponing fall sports. They may move the fall sports to the spring, but they have not yet made that decision. But for sure, all middle school fall sports are postponed. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Actually, you need for one second, Dr. McGee. Can I speak for a minute?
Yeah, is that Nancy?
Yes, it is.
Yes, yeah, Mr. Chairman, you mind if, if Ms. Giordano, she she has more up-to-date information than I do.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Okay, thank you. Surely, Dr. McGee, it's going to be cross-country, girls tennis and sideline cheer that are definite go.
Okay.
Starting Monday. But in soccer and field hockey, they are the ones that are going to be talked about again on Friday.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. So soccer, boys and girls, and field hockey, they're having that meeting on Friday. And there's going to be a lot of modifications. And there's a possibility that it might be postponed. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
Okay, thank you. Dr. McGee, would you speak to transportation? Are we okay? I know during this whole process of airflow inspections and everything else and getting a hold of parents and children, obviously, the transportation routes had to be determined and adjusted. Are we okay? Are we are we set with that?
Yes, so we're still in the process of working with with Durham. And Mr. Perrier has has been has been communicating with them directly. We have a a meeting scheduled with them on Friday. But what we've been doing is with respect to our pre-K students and our self-contained students, I know that the that we've been reaching out to that, to those parents directly to to determine whether they need transportation so that we have specific names and 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 numbers of students that we can provide to to Durham. And then with with respect to to kindergarten, we are, we're going to be taking rosters and and ensuring that we have enough transport, we have enough buses to transport those students. In in light of the fact that not everyone is coming back initially in phase one, and that's really the case, I think, in in many districts, that there there will be more buses available for us to transport a lower number of students on our buses. I'm not sure, Brad, if you wanted to add anything to that.
I know, Dr. McGee, you you hit the nail on the head there. We have, I've been communicating with Durham on a weekly basis and they've been set up to transport everybody. So we've approached it like a regular year. We're now at the phase where we know who we're bringing back and we just need to finish pulling off the people who aren't coming back. We'll meld it with the people we know who are not asking for transportation. And we'll have a final list by the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Dr. McGee, let's let's talk about teachers for a minute. We know that We know that during the course of the summer, there were teachers that were at least indicating that they did not want to come back because of the COVID. Do we know how many teachers have opted out with medical reasoning and all the good things? That's part one. And secondly, when will the students meet their teachers as the school begins? Maybe you can address some of those concerns that I've heard from.
Yes, so the first question is, we do have a list. Ms. Dargan, Mickey Dargan, our Director of Human Resources, has a spreadsheet of staff who have reached out to her and will not be returning. One of the things that we're in the process of doing, we started looking at it today, we're going to complete it tomorrow, is we, I literally have, I'm speaking to you from the conference room at McPhee and I literally have on the walls chart paper of every building, every grade, elementary grade, every teacher, the number of students that have opted out in each of those teachers' classrooms to date. I had, I asked my principals to send that information to me today. So to have a sense of, for example, you know, how many kindergarten students will choose, parents will choose virtually, so we'll have a sense of how many teachers we're going to need virtually to instruct those students. Tomorrow, we're going to look at these numbers again. We're going to look at the staff who have already been approved to not return and we're going to formulate a plan as to which staff will teach students virtually. We actually have a meeting with the principals, Ms. Dargan, Dr. Holt, Ms. Morell and the union to look at what that's going to look like. So first question is, yes, we have a process in place so that we can determine who those teachers are and who those students are. Your second question is meeting the teachers. So they're going to, the students that are in on Monday will meet their teachers, obviously in person. Virtually, those students will be meeting their teachers initially virtually on Monday. So that's how we're establishing that process. I know we talked about potentially, you know, having students, those students that are virtual, maybe come in in groups to, you know, so that there's a face to the student's name. We haven't coordinated that as of yet, because the first part of this is just establishing who's coming in, who's not coming in, and making sure that those students that are not coming in, who are new to our district, will receive the resources, like a Chromebook and other types of materials to start the school year.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I invite the members of the committee to ask your questions and make your comments, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Chair Burke.
First comment, I want to commend Dr. McGee and his team for putting together this plan. There's a lot of insight into this plan. And obviously, it also meets to some degree what the governor had said, that this was a phase in of schools this year. You know, beginning school is not, everyone starts on the same day. This is a phase in. So I'm glad to see that this program of three phases does represent, you know, a phase in program. Also, I think people have to understand, they want to compare our district with other districts in the state. But our district has 6,000 students. So dealing with close to 6,000 students is quite different than a district that has maybe 1,000. And I think this plan, this plan addresses the ways we can to bring students together. And I do have one question though, one next, one question. Could you explain why the hybrid has students come in Tuesday and Thursday and then Wednesday and Friday? Some hybrids I've seen have students come in Tuesday and Wednesday and then the other cohort is Thursday and Friday. Now, the plan is fine, but could you explain your thinking behind it?
So that's a very good question, Mr. Burke. So initially, the plans that we submitted to RIDE had exactly what you're talking about. It had Monday as a virtual day, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then Thursday, Friday. After thinking about it, our team felt as though teachers not seeing students in person for, so let's say you are in the front of the alphabet and you see your teacher on Monday and Tuesday. You're not going to see them again until, or I'm sorry, Tuesday and Wednesday in person. You're not going to see them again until the following Tuesday. So it's almost a week. And we felt, I felt, by spreading it out a little bit, they were able to, although they see them the same number of times, they would actually physically see them more closer to the time, the previous day that they saw their students. So that was, that's the rationale behind going from a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday to a Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Friday.
Great, thank you.
You know, when I saw that, the way you changed it, I thought the same. It sounds like you're bringing a sense of normalcy, not only to the teachers, but to the students, where you've got, you've got, you're in school and you're seeing your teacher more often than having a big break. It's almost like having a vacation. Or you got to go back to distance learning for a longer period of time. I kind of like this. Anyone else? Mrs. Capwell, I saw you raise your hand.
All right, thank you, Chairman Borje. You know, you touched on it, Dr. McGee, you know, the apology that we're having to make these decisions so close to when school actually start and quite frankly, through really no fault of anybody here. But I think it's going to be really important now that our families feel as though they have a true path forward and an understanding of what's going to happen, that maybe they get kind of a re-download of some of the information that has been spilling over to them throughout the course of the last couple of months. So can you tell the families that are listening tonight what they should expect by way of some sort of comprehensive re-education as to what's really going to transpire? Whether it's cleaning, the way in which the classrooms move together, whatever it is, just kind of repackaged with what do they really, really need to know?
Yeah, that's a good point. So I'll be sending out, I'm going to start by sending out a letter tomorrow to everyone just describing what the plan looks like. We'll be putting it on our social media posts as well. And in addition to that, we're going to be providing information to parents around things such as, what are the expectations for attendance? Because that's going to look very different this time around than it did in the spring. In the spring, a student would have been marked present if they just showed up like once during the day, for example. The virtual days are going to be much, much more structured than they were in the spring. So students will be expected to, you know, check in and they will be expected to, you know, we talk about synchronous versus asynchronous instruction when it comes to distance learning. And synchronous instruction simply means that the teacher is face-to-face with the students on the computer, you know, in a Google Meet or a Google Hangout. And synchronous is that. Asynchronous is when students are working on assigned work and they're not necessarily, you know, faced, computer screen to computer screen with the teacher. So that is going to be sent out on Friday to our families so that there's an understanding exactly of what that looks like. And we're also, especially for our elementary families, we're going to be sending out to them what a day is going to look like. I know Dr. Holt's been working with Mrs. DiRiso and some other staff, district staff members on what that's going to look like, so parents will know what, you know, what the day will look like for their children when they're virtual. And then we'll also send out other information with respect to, you know, mask wearing and things like that. So that will be coming out to families very soon.
Thank you. And Chairman Borje, I just have one more question. This might be more for Al. So going back to the HEPA filters, the file that you had sent out had indicated that, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's about 195 air units that would need to be purchased. Are these air units inclusive of the 300K we saw in for Next Gen around the air ducts or is that an additional cost that we're going to be presented?
That's an additional cost, the air duct cleaning. So it's a three-pronged approach to this. One, we're optimizing the HVAC units on the roofs and any of the ventilators in any of the classrooms, if they're not rooftop units, if they're units within the classroom. The second piece to the three-pronged approach is cleaning of all the duct work within the district, again, to create that maximum airflow between the units and the classrooms where they have the registers and exchanges. And the third piece to it is, is after the measurements have been completed, we're going to supplement our existing HVAC systems and ventilating systems with these portable units in order to get us to the four to six air changes per hour throughout the building per right guidelines. And one thing to note on the report is, this was done without the systems being optimized. But again, as I said earlier in the meeting, it's just to make sure we have everything in place to go.
Anything else, Mrs. Capwell?
No. Sorry, I'm trying to say no, my dog doesn't respect the fact that I am in a meeting right now and wants to bark. I apologize.
Understandable. Mrs. Kepiscus, do you have any comments, questions?
You know I do.
We have the same conversation every single meeting, but please.
I have a few, so I'll start with them, I'll start at the beginning. The Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Friday question, doesn't this increase the burden for cleaning tremendously?
So not having that one day, certainly, and that was something that I definitely thought about, Mrs. Kepiscus. But Al and I talked about what that will look like in terms of custodial staff cleaning the buildings. And we both felt as though they would be able to clean those buildings appropriately for the next group of students to come through. You know, when we start with Phase 1, we'll just have, as I said, pre-K, K and our self-contained programs. And so while other teachers will be in the building, it won't be to the degree of having, you know, a massive number of students there. When we get to the Phase 2, where we have the hybrids, where we have them coming in, that I'm confident, and Mr. Nuttarianni has assured me that there will be a schedule of, you know, of how those buildings will be cleaned when students are not in the building. And also, when students are in the building, they'll continue, you know, to ensure that areas are cleaned.
Another question, and it relates to special education. I know that self-contained classes, K through 12, are being brought in. What about the students who have IEPs but are not in self-contained classes? Are they going to be following the same distance learning, A through L, M through Z schedule as all the other students who are Gen Ed?
They will, yes. I know I spoke with Mrs. Morell today and she had indicated that case managers, the students' case managers, will be reaching out to them to make sure that they have, you know, the supports they need on the days that they're virtual, and especially Phase 1, which is when they will be virtual five days a week. So I know she indicated that the case managers and other, you know, support staff will be reaching out to them to make sure that they're getting what they need in terms of supports.
Then I have a couple of questions that have been coming in to me fast and furious as you've been talking. People are asking, why are we going to distance learning if so many parents have opted out to, why are we still doing a hybrid plan if so many parents have opted out to distance learning? And I'm going to presume that the spacing is still too tight to bring everyone back at this point.
It is. And that's been a bone of contention for me and probably many other superintendents across the state. The guidelines state six feet, students need to be separated by six feet. Now, there are districts that are coming back and they're starting the year, whether it's full in-person across the board, I don't think there are many, but there are at least a few that I'm aware of. I don't know how they're separating their students by six feet if they have, you know, 24 students in a classroom. So what they're doing is they're going closer than six feet. And I've asked RIDE a few times about that guideline or the guidance that states students should be separated by six feet. That's what we're, we're starting our Phase 1 with that guidance, the six-foot guidance. RIDE says they recommend six feet, but you can, you could have them closer than six feet. But I want to start, I want to start prudently and I want to start, I don't want to start by having, you know, students three feet from one another. I want to see how things are going during the first phase. As we move beyond the first phase and beyond, you know, beyond the second phase, then maybe in some situations, we do get closer than six feet in terms of classrooms. But to start, I want to start with the six-foot guidance.
Thank you. I have a few more questions. The Monday virtual for everybody, is it still the intent that teachers will be in their classrooms on that Monday instructing virtually?
So Monday's not virtual for everyone. Monday is, so it's virtual for anyone other than pre-K, K and self-contained. So yes, they will be at school on those days.
Okay, and Mr. Burke usually asks about sports, so I'm going to ask about my special interest and that's music. Has there been any provision made? I know the original guidance from RIDE was no music, no chorus, no band, no way, no how. Has there been any provision for what's going to go on with music classes?
So I haven't had conversations with the music department, but I do know the guidance that has come out from RIDE is that if it's a, say a chorus class, if students are 14 feet apart, then they're good to go. Now, I know that the logistics of that is, unless you're in Symphony Hall, you know, it might be a little challenging to do that. And so when we run into that obstacle, the possibility is that they could, on, you know, days where they could go outside, and this is, this is suggestions from RIDE, is that take them outside, you can space them, you know, 14 feet, but they should not be closer than 14 feet. With respect to band, same thing. And I know that that's just as challenging, if not more challenging, because I've had the honor of attending many choral and band performances and, you know, it's pretty hard to have the brass section 14 feet apart from one another. You know, again, if you have a football field to use, it's probably a little easier. But I would say that we would look at that guidance to follow, but, you know, we're open to, you know, having conversations with the music department to see how we could best accommodate while keeping, you know, students and staff safe.
It's disappointing to me that sports, where people are going to be far closer than 14 feet, is going to be allowed, but music just falls by the wayside. It shows where the focus is at RIDE and that's unfair to many students who go to school on music scholarships. It's not all just sports.
It is, and I suspect that, I mean, it could change. You know, certainly here in Windsocket, there is, we have an amazing music program. an amazing music program, you know, with, and I, I'm sure statewide, if, if, if the music, you know, the association of, of, you know, music educators has not gotten to the ear of RIDE, I'm, I'm sure that soon they, they will. And as, as we start the school year, you know, I, I'm sure that there are things that, that may well be modified, and hopefully that's one of them.
I hope so, too. And I just have one final comment, I think. If you'll indulge me, the disclaimer being that I'm not an educator but an attorney, and I'm just trying to help clarify some terms for people that are non-changingable. I've been hearing from a lot of parents who want to opt out from return to school buildings in favor of what they're calling homeschooling. And I'm advising them, before you speak to anyone in the school department, make sure you decide what you want to opt into, is actually homeschooling or is distance learning? The terms are non-changingable, and this can be confusing. Both options are viable alternatives, and I'm not whoo-whooing one over the other, and I'm not recommending one over the other. I'm just trying to help explain the differences. Distance learning is a program where your school district brings instruction into your home distantly using technology. Homeschooling is a program whereby you essentially opt out of the district and create your own school. You develop the curriculum, subject to the local education authorities' approval, and handle all the grading and attendance, all of which gets reported back to the district annually, pursuant to our homeschooling policy that's in place. With distance learning, the school department is still educating your child. A teacher is still teaching your child just remotely, at least part of the time. With homeschooling, you're alone. You're educating your child alone, just complying with the homeschool district's homeschooling policies, that the district can report back to the RIDE Department of Education, that RIDE can be assured their child is receiving an education, albeit one of your own choosing, and that the child is not actually truant, and that's the important thing. To avoid confusion later, you need to, as a parent, to know which you are selecting, and by using the correct term. Because if you select homeschooling unknowingly, thinking you're selecting distance learning, your child could end up truant if you are not actually following the homeschooling policy. Whereas with distance learning, if your child's an active participant in distance learning, they would not be truant and would be educated by a One Socket School Department educator. And thank you for that indulgence.
Very good.
Anything else from any committee member? I, I want to just make a mention of sports and music. If on Friday, the governor and the Interscholastic League postpone soccer and field hockey, because those are really team sports, and they allow tennis, which is basically no more than four people on a court, unless, these days, they put a lot more on a court. I don't think so. You can have doubles matches or singles matches. And I, so to me, I can see there's, there's at least better distancing. And cross-country, actually, you're all running. And it's not, even though you're on a team, it's kind of singular. So I can understand why they would allow these sports for the fall. But I agree with Mrs. Kepiscus. I mean, it's a shame that the sports teams are going to be postponed, and also the music programs are going to have to be adapted to this COVID environment. Hopefully, we can find a way to make both happen. That would be nice. I also want to just say that, let's remember that the General Assembly created the school committees. And our committee is, has the authority, the end responsibility for the reopening of schools based on the health conditions presented, and that's going to be present in our schools. And I think Dr. McGee, your plan, and I want to, again, congratulate you, your directors, your staff, all the committees that worked so hard for so many months to get this plan in place so that we can reopen our schools in this district, given all the obstacles that we received, that we've had to endure from Providence. Your plan is really geared to preserve and protect our children's health, as well as our teachers' health, our staff's health, and I congratulate you for that. This was not an easy process, and I know you and I have struggled over this and talked about this many an hour. But I think this plan really serves the district well. It'll give us an opportunity to evaluate how, how the phases will go, and who knows what's going to happen in the state, whether or not COVID will rear its ugly head, and hopefully will not have surges, we won't have any cases, or very few of them, in that we will be able to protect all our children and staff and teachers. Are there any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to just make one more comment. Any, any parents or families that have any, any questions about, about the plan, you know, any, any, anything, can certainly email me, but I, I would suggest emailing their building principal, because the building principals are, are the ones that are going to take this plan and, and make it work in their individual buildings. So especially if there are, are parents who are looking, who have not opted to, to, for their students to, to utilize distance learning, to reach out directly to the principal. And again, I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying, don't, don't email me if you have any questions or, or comments or anything, but if, if it's specific to, you know, what might be happening at your child's school, I would, I would just ask that they're, the, the most direct information they would get would be from their building administrator principal.
Thank you. And Dr. McGee.
Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, just one final comment.
Sure.
We, we all have to be flexible. I think the times dictate that, that we have to be flexible and obviously see how things play out. And if we keep that attitude, I think we can make things work. Thank you.
I think flexibility is the key. I agree with you, Mr. Vice Chair Burke. Flexibility, you know, if you're a parent, you may want to get your child into school or you want to keep him at home. We all have, we have a large family here. We have 6,000 children. Phew, that's a lot of babysitting costs. Oh, I know, 6,000 of them. And so we're in, we, we've given the charge to protect their health, as well as provide them with a, with a very good education. And I think this plan really goes far and above to really do that in a very safe and healthy way. So I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's reopening plan as presented tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Capwell. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje. Vice Chair Burke. Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Back to school.
Well, back to school. Don, you, you're not retired. There you are.
I'll be there the first day.
Oh, there we go. Me, too. Um, let's go on to the subcommittee reports. First, we'll hear the technology update, Mrs. Capwell and Vice Chair Burke.
Excellent. Vice Chair Burke, are you good with me just giving the update?
Yes, I am.
All right. Perfect. So this Thursday, September 3rd, the Technology Subcommittee met. It was a brief meeting, and I do apologize because my dog may start barking at any minute. So I'm going to go quickly through this. We began with the approval of the August 20th meeting minutes, and then moved right into day on technology. So the last committee meeting utilizing a-
Block grant.
However, as there are a lot of districts that are vying for technology at this moment, we do recognize that there will be a little bit of a delay in the receipt of these materials, just been, some of them are on backorder. I want to be clear that one of the materials that are technology that's being ordered is like meeting the current demands of the students and teachers from a day-to-day standpoint. We are in check and in line with that. We then moved on to new teacher orientation, which was conducted, and per Al, he felt was quite successful, and he commended and thanked Dr. Holt and Ms. Dargan, along with Jess and Heather, for the exceptional work they did in, in concluded the new teacher orientation. Al then moved on to update the group on several projects that are moving forward. One of them-
I think we're losing you, Rebecca. Mrs. Capwell, you're frozen in time. We're not hearing you very well.
All right.
Is it the grid?
If I can't get through, can you hear me now?
Yep. We've lost you again.
No.
I, I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I can't pick up.
Can you hear me?
Al has it. Yep.
Not anymore. What's that?
Mrs. Capwell suggested that we move on to the next agenda item and she'll call back into-
Very well. Okay. All right. Well, we'll, we'll hold that report. So let's, let's talk about the facilities update. When I turn it over to you, Mr. Natariani, a lot of the items that we're going to speak about in terms of our meeting, we've covered in the report, but why don't you give us the highlights of our meeting?
So I would say, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The highlights of the meeting would be that we've covered the three-pronged approach to preparing our schools for the reopening process. We're cleaning all of the duct work within all of our schools that have HVAC systems. We're optimizing all of the HVAC systems and air exchange systems within the district, anything that is conducive to proper airflow to meet the guidelines for reopening, which is four to six changes per hour of air within the classrooms or educational space. And the third and final piece to that, as we're assessing all of those rooms, we've contracted with OcuHealth and EnviroClean to conduct an audit of all of our buildings to ensure that we're meeting the four to six changes per hour. At the conclusion of that audit, which we should have the, some finalized numbers for all the buildings, we will then purchase the appropriate HEPA filters and equipment, place them in strategic locations to make sure we're maintaining the four to six hour, uh, four to six changes per hour. So those are the, the main highlights with regard to that issue, the airflow changes or requirements for, for COVID. In addition to that, we discussed the plumbing repairs throughout the district. We've had plumbing crews in all of our buildings, ensuring that we have no plumbing issues for the start of school, focusing in on the fact that we're going to need proper running water with hot and cold water in all of our buildings and locations. And we also touched upon transportation, which we discussed earlier this evening, in regard to working with Durham to ensure that we have transportation bus services for all of our students for the reopening of the school. I believe that, that covered the, the topics, and I know, I apologize because it's more repetition at this point, but that's what we discussed.
I guess one of the items that we discussed as well, and towards the end, it caught my ear, when you said, we're going to input, we're going to, you know, install all these filters, but we're going to have to worry about the electrical services in the schools.
That's correct. That's correct, Chairman.
We've got to look at that so that we don't have a complete wipeout and blackout in our school.
Yeah, yeah. So facilities is, is like a moving train, and we're moving from one car to the next, and we're down to the electrical car. So that will be the next piece to this entire puzzle, is making sure that the appropriate electrical service. It's been a challenge in the past, and I suspect it will be a challenge, but I'm confident that we will make sure that this all works for, for the first day of school next week.
Right. I'm glad we're in the electrical car and not just in the caboose. That's, that's always a good thing.
Me as well, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Vice Chair Burke.
There was one, one item that was discussed, I thought, that we'll, that we're putting together, Technology Committee or the Facilities Committee is putting together laptops and backpacks for every elementary student, and, and they're going to be presented. Maybe you can explain the days that that's going to happen?
That, that's correct, Mr. Burke. So we're in the process. So today and yesterday, we delivered pallets of supplies to all of the schools, included school supplies for the students, along with personal protective equipment, backpacks and Chromebooks for those students that are new to the One Socket Education Department. So that, that's been a lengthy process, and it's been a joint process between technology staff and the facility staff in the district.
Anyone else? Make a motion to-
Mr. Chair, Lynn.
Yes, Lynn, please.
I received a question from somebody, and I'm going to pass it along, and I think it's fair game, since we just did talk about that airflow report. Someone is asking, is that ratio fresh air or just room swaps? I'll admit I didn't understand the question.
So, um, so if the air swaps are four to six air changes per hour, and Eric Anderson's on the call here with us right now, he's the gentleman, our consultant from EnviroClean, and he can certainly weigh in if you want me to get more detailed on that.
Please, Eric.
Sure, I can make a quick comment. It's not necessarily fresh air as an outdoor air or makeup air. The air is coming from other parts. It is through a series of filters. The state, the schools already have MIRV seven filters, or MIRV eight, and they're going to be increasing those filters. And then the additional air exchange that we may be adding to some of the classrooms will be HEPA filter, which is 99.97% filtration accuracy. So it's, nobody has pure fresh air makeup. It's just, it's, it's filtered air. Think of it that way.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the facilities update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Capwell, would you like to continue your update?
Sure. Not 100% sure where I lost you. So I'm going to quickly go through it. We started off with approval of the meeting minutes from August 20th. We then moved into a technology update where we are placing the order for iPad technology for some of the school classrooms. Some of those technology elements are on backorder, given the large volume of orders being placed by many school districts at this time. Just want to reassure, when we say that we're placing an order for these incremental items using some grant monies, that, that the, the team is aware, the committee is aware that this is supplemental, this is not any sort of deficit to what is required for our students or teachers to be kicked off appropriately for this distance learning school year. There was also new teacher orientation that was conducted. Al had said it was quite successful and gave his thanks to Dr. Holt, Ms. Dargan, Jess and Heather for the exceptional work around that new teacher orientation. And then he proceeded to update the group on several projects that are moving forward, specifically, or the first one we discussed, which is a digital assessment, a digital assessment system that allows for us to better offer testing and a greater range of testing for students with eligibility for special education. If anybody wants additional information to dive into that on this call, if Dawn is available, she did provide greater context to the team that was on, on the call. We also purchased a DocuHub digital system for signatures. This is something that was originally tested in the HR department. So people are not familiar with it in this world where you really need signatures on documents, but you're not in person. This does allow you to legally, you know, move documents digitally and sign them without being in person. So this is something that's going to roll out to all departments in the fall. This will, this next topic is the digital citizenship policy. So we have talked about it on a previous subcommittee update, where the policy subcommittee will review and enhance and get recommendations from the technology committee around, or Al's group, I should say, around language for the digital citizenship policy. A lot of the language that is used today around how to appropriately utilize technology within the school system is a bit outdated in ways of its terminology and use. So just given the way in which we are moving towards this greater usage, it is deemed appropriate that something get updated or the policy get updated and then put back out to the committee. Last time we gave our update, we talked about home internet for students, just wanting to confirm for the group that this is still in, hence, the team is still moving forward and has forced the application for monies to be provided to us, should they be available in order to execute, utilizing our fiber optic ring in order to hopefully offer free Wi-Fi to students using our district or our WED technology. That's something that in the upcoming weeks, months, we don't have a set date that we'll learn more about, but we'll continue to update the committee on where that stands. Two more items as far as security cameras go. There are a couple of elementary schools that need to be wrapped up as far as having the finalization of all of the security camera work that we've been talking about throughout the course of the summer. We needed to, or Al's team needed to reprioritize some of the electricians and their resources to work on more important projects. And as soon as that is wrapped up, they will pivot back to ensuring that as we move into the school year, all of the elementary security camera systems are fully functioning. And then we landed on our next meeting date, which is Tuesday, September 29 at 6:00 p.m. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Capwell. Anyone out, anyone questions or comments?
I think you covered it all.
Wonderful.
Good job. I'll make a motion to receive, place on file the technology update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
And I'll turn it over to Mr. Notorianni for facilities, technology update. I don't know if there's any more to cover, but you're on the agenda, so it's all yours.
I think we've covered all the topics, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have anything to share significantly. We've covered everything. There was no report.
Okay.
But there is, but it's covered by everything else we've discussed.
I think you've done an admirable job in covering all the facility technology items throughout this evening, so thank you very much. And again, Dr. McGee, thank you so much, you and your staff, all your directors, your principals, your teachers, for working so hard all these months to finally be able to structure a plan, a reopening plan like you have. I think our children will be able to get a good education in a very safe manner.
You're welcome.
No further items on our agenda, so I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:35 p.m. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
We are adjourned.